See, can't hardly listen without dancing.
It's just you two moving.
It's a very salsa vibe.
It's fun.
I definitely feel like drinking beer and having chips and salsa with this song.
At least, yes.
That's good, because that's probably was the intention when we came up with the show.
Right?
Just like you're sitting around having a beer or soda and chips and salsa.
Very catchy, very catchy.
That's fun. That's definitely fun.
It's time for our Chips and Salsa Show, New Mexico.
It sure is. Do you want to do the introductions there?
Well, okay, as you can guess, this is our first show since our tragic event that happened in our nation. But I want to let you know, Zeke and I have the pleasure of having Christina Moore on with us today, who's running for school board here locally in Las Cruces, District Number Two. And after we take care of some national business and tributes and things, we will devote, the show is really for her, because we had her scheduled since last week.
Yeah.
But we have to address this horrible, just horrendous, and I'm still, it's very interesting, I feel like I lost my nephew, a member of my family. It's just been very difficult for so many people with our Charlie Kirk's loss. It really has been. I was fortunate to meet Charlie when I still lived in Phoenix. The Turning Point Center wasn't too far actually from my house, it was there in Tampa Bay, off baseline. And Tyler Boyer, who was the CFO at the time, who's very good friends, very active in the Republican Party, he said, hey, you guys want to come down and take a tour? So myself, Don Jorge, and I believe Steve Palmer, who used to help us on the show, you met Steve when we went to America Fest.
Yes, yes.
Has the beard. And so we went and we're doing a little tour, and you know, you can imagine, he was so busy, busy and he's kind of running out of his office, but he still had time to come over, meet us, shake our hand, and just such wonderful, good energy, okay? I mean, I didn't get to sit and talk to him for minutes, a few minutes or anything, because he was just, I didn't want to do that to him. I mean, I wanted to, would you just stay and talk to us? But he was, you know, he had stuff to do. But I just want to mention that because, you know, a lot of times you meet somebody and sometimes you're like turned off, or you think, you know, I don't know about this person, but that was not my reaction. He's just such a horrible loss for us, but at the same time, they have no idea, just like his wife Eric said, what they have unleashed. And that's why we're going to be here, man, right?
Yeah. Yeah, it was very tragic. I'm still, I'm not so upset about it anymore. It's like the stages of grief, right? Anger is part of it, it's one of them. I was angry at the beginning. But it's just like, you know, you see so many people come out for him, more than I ever imagined. And I know for a fact, like, they got, what, thirty thousand applicants for chapters now? And they only have like ten thousand, eight thousand normally is what they do. So they've got triple the amount of university chapter applications going through now. So he's already tripled his message already. And so I know for us, we talked about it briefly, and we're going to go into more detail. But we want to do more stuff here for the show. We want to support other people who are for truth, who are not necessarily Republican. Because the thing about, you know, I want to talk about Charlie real quick, is that Turning Point had massively outperformed the RNC.
Massively is a good word.
That's just what it was. They were better at walking, they were better at getting the younger vote, they were better at getting people to vote in general. And so you really see the pitfalls and the shortcomings of the Republican Party through Turning Point. He didn't say that out publicly, of course not, but that's the reality of it. He was so effective in getting people off the couch, getting people involved, that it got President Trump to win. I mean, he outwardly credits Charlie Kirk's work to him getting in the office. So let's continue that tradition. You don't have to do it through the Republican Party. I do my part through the Republican Party, Alice does too, but a lot of people don't. And Charlie, what it is, is a working relationship. If we all have conservative values, we have things in common, we can do different things to achieve the same goals. That's how I like to look at it. I'm not trying to antagonize the Republican Party or Turning Point, or anybody for that matter. You don't have to even be a registered Republican or anything. You can be independent and still have similar values and want to support a candidate like Christina Moore, like we have for school board. And I haven't had time to meet you yet, I'm very honored to meet you finally.
Nice to meet you.
I give, I have a great deal of respect for people who run for office, especially school board. Holy smokes, that, we need help there more. And yeah, that's why you're running. So I can't wait for you to get into that, but you know, let's.
Zeke, I just want to interject.
Yeah, go ahead.
He did have superstar outreach. He really did. No one had ever done what he could. You know, and when I still lived in Phoenix, my friend Monique, she kept saying, you gotta listen to Charlie. And I had met him and I liked him, what he did, but I just didn't really have the time. Then, when all these, you know, a few years ago, a couple of years ago, they started coming through all his videos, I was addicted, because he knew his argument, he knew his information. And at the same time, people could come up and they would say anything and horrible, awful things. And he was like a saint, man. He just took it and very pleasant and respectful all the time. And that's why I'm very excited about having Christina on too, because, you know, who he was talking to were the college students, so they had already gone through their education, their first twelve years. But we have an opportunity to get good people and help that cause as well.
Yeah. And it's a righteous cause. The kids here in New Mexico especially are just being, you know, fiftieth in the country, fifty-first. They argue, sometimes Puerto Rico beats us, which is very sad. But with Charlie Kirk, the other thing too is, I really want to discuss, it's kind of a controversial topic, but hey, that's what we're here for, right?
I bet I know what it is.
I know what it is. What do you think about that? The people getting fired for cheering on his death? What do you, what do you think about that?
Well, I don't know every situation, highly inappropriate, but I'm glad you brought that up, because, did you hear about the doctor in Albuquerque?
No, I've been, I've been arguing with that guy for years, for like about a year. I finally blocked him a couple of months ago, but he is nasty. That guy's nasty.
So this gentleman, I don't know if you can call him a gentleman, but he's a New Mexico doctor. And he basically said that Charlie Kirk deserved to die. Now, you can have an opinion, you know, maybe you don't, you really hate a person so much, but the role that he's in, and the doctor's Hippocratic oath, to do no harm. I'm just, it's incredible. And this guy, it's not like he's, you know, a brand new doctor, a lot of experience. So you've already argued with him, you know exactly who he is. I don't even want to say his name.
And don't say his name. I mean, I was really interested, he started to jump on my comments, on my face. He hit me hard. And, you know, I'm like, this guy's a real doctor. I looked into, yeah, he wrote, he's wrote a book. He's a very seasoned doctor. And he's legit, he's a legit M.D. But he's just the same kind of guys where they just, he thinks of the whole thing like fascism, right? That's like they did with Charlie Kirk, right? He's a fascist with no proof. It's not even true. If you understand the real definition and look at history, what true fascists admit, it's a complete gaslight operation. So he was in that same category. No matter what you said or what you did, Trump was a Nazi, right? Charlie Kirk was a fascist Nazi, and that's that. There's nothing, you can't get beyond any type of argument there. And I tried with him, I always try with everybody, I'm trying to be like Jesus, you know, humble, humble, trying to be humble about it, but seriously, you know, Jesus was the guy who went in there and hooked up with the prostitutes. He was the one that went in there, forgave all the murderers and all the sinners and washed people. So I try to do the same thing with people hitting me up like that. But when they start disrespecting me, and you guys know, I'll block you quick. So he got disrespectful, I blocked him, I'm glad they're ousting him, I hope he lose, I don't want to say he loses practice, but does this, you really trust this guy with your health? I mean, seriously? I would never trust this guy with my health.
It's horrible judgment for him to go so public to say that. And that's where I have a problem, okay? Again, anybody can have their own opinions, but you should know your job well enough and what's appropriate and what is not appropriate. And have the judgment to do that and hold, you know, hold your opinion. There's a lot, it just, it really, it's very frustrating to me. So are they gonna let him go? I haven't seen.
I think it's his own practice. I mean, if you've got your own business, if you got it like that, where you can say what you want and get away with it, I mean, I got it like that. I got free speech. You know, I can say whatever I want, don't worry about losing nothing. I've lost a tremendous amount just having my beliefs in general through COVID, through the lockdowns with my family and stuff. Because of my beliefs, I've had incurred tons of loss. So I don't really have that much empathy for people losing their job, for doing something horrible and awful, because I didn't do anything horrible and awful, I was standing up for truth, and I still had a lot of loss. So these guys are actually basically, in my opinion, they're inciting, they're encouraging more of this. If they're trying to reward people who did this stuff and say that it's okay, that can spark another violent act, because like, oh, look how much praise they get for it. It's basically like the whole serial killer thing, right? I mean.
Well, we're just reinforcing the behavior. So, and plus, it's bad representation of the company. Like that lady that denied going to print up a prayer visual poster. I'm like, who are you? It's not proper.
It's so bold. Okay, so I just want to let you know, he is a certified addiction, let's see, Doc Medicine? Yeah, that's what I'm saying. Sorry, the print's really small and it's a little bit dark in here.
So he's making money. That's a lucrative job.
And so he's, maybe he's going to lose some clients, maybe he's going to gain some clients. This is America still, and we have free speech. But it's just very disappointing, all the hate that's out there.
Yeah, it is sad. And I can't stand it. That's the one thing that blew my mind the most, is how much people came out and people in my Facebook feed, I mean, I had to block a lot of people that I'd never, the people that, it's crazy, the people that I grew up with, and I guess there's some kind of like thing that goes on, like your family never really like trusts you, because they saw you through all your vulnerable times growing up and stuff like that. It's like that with my childhood friends, like, they are the most vicious recently over the weekend. The people that I grew up, I played baseball with for years, people I grew up with at school with, man, they came out against Charlie, and man, they tried to throw me under the bus. And I'm like, man, I'm sorry to do this to you, but I got to block you, bro, you know? And so that was, that was a trip to see how much, you know, disgusting energy came out of that on the back end.
And I just have to ask you, because, I mean, you had almost a normal childhood.
I did.
Why are they so anti-conservative? And I'll call it conservative, because the true epitome of conservatism, that was Charlie. He really was.
You know, I don't know. I really don't know. I just know Austin Trout got on my feed and he started to praise, you know, Charlie Kirk's death right away. And it was on my most popular post. And then a bunch of his fans started to kind of like chime in, but oh, man, they got swarmed. I mean, they got hammered. I mean, I had to block him and a lot of other guys that were supporting him. But, you know, there's just way more of us than them. That's the thing. It's like, dude, do you guys not see? Just keep your mouth shut, bro. You're in a very small minority here, bro. Like, you're not going to win this argument. You already lost the argument. That's why he got shot, because you guys can't win the argument, you know? And that was my main argument to them, was like, look, you guys made the wrong choice philosophically. You lost the election, you're going to lose every election from here on out. Either you're going to try to wake up and try to, you know, realize you're wrong and be humble about it, or you're just going to keep losing. So keep on losing, man. That was my opinion.
Well, they keep doubling down on bad behavior. And it's turning people against their own party, so.
That's exactly right.
Just let them keep showing their true colors.
That's right.
I mean, it's heartbreaking. It's just a testament to the state of our society, you know? We kill, we live in a society that sacrificed the preborn. And we wonder why people have no respect for human life.
That's right.
It's a natural, a natural result of the society we've led.
They love death.
Yeah. It really does. It really does. And it's heartbreaking to see.
But you have a good point, because as much as I don't like to see those videos, the hateful videos, and people just getting on there and shooting their mouth off, I shouldn't even say the word shoot, but, you know, I appreciate them, because as you said, they expose themselves. If you're willing to be so bold and be that hateful, you know, Christina and I, we are, we're in front of the pink house, and we get our share of the middle finger. But I will tell you, it's about ninety-five to one, right? About ninety-five percent are some thumbs up and some good waves. But, you know, we get that, and it's kind of good in a way, because it, you get used to it. Like, I can't imagine, you know, Charlie, would he, you know, all the different arguments that he had, and people calling names and all that, you know, a middle finger, big deal. They're driving in a car, they feel safe, and they just casually toss it off like it's nothing. I would never do that to anybody.
We've had a few screamers.
They'd have to be, yeah. They'd have to be really bad circumstances.
And for the pink house, this is a place where they, if you want to, if you want to deal with a pregnancy in a not-so-popular way, that, we'll just say that, we're trying to avoid key words here. But yeah, that's the notorious area where that goes down. You know, we're known to be the tourist capital in the country now for this type of stuff.
That's so right. Unfortunately, yeah, they think it's something to do, so. That needs to change. We need to stop the center.
I agree with that.
No society can be built off the blood of the innocent.
No.
And what, what did we hear, like, one birth last year? With the twenty-two, some thousand abortions, and then twenty-two thousand plus one live birth. So it's just eugenics.
That's right.
It's eugenics.
That's the key word of the year there. I like that.
So it's just we reformulated everything, the sterilization, the gender confusion, it's all eugenics.
It is.
And we can get into that when we start talking about the position that you are running for. Just a quick, Forty Days for Life is starting up, guys, just a reminder to let you know, Forty Days for Life.
We can use all the power warriors we can get.
They don't like humanity, guys. That's what this whole AI tech movement is all about. We're going to be obsolete, we don't need to be here anymore. They want to get off of this planet with their AI god and upload their consciousness to some cloud. And this is literally what they believe. The people who rule our world have this, you know, philosophical beliefs, and they invest trillions of dollars into fulfilling these plans. They've been doing it for decades. They're trying to get rid of us through the food, through the freaking chemtrails, through the water, various ways, you know, and I'm glad you said that, Eugene, that's a great, great point. And that's something we need, and you know what? RFK is starting to have that discussion publicly. When he's talking about all these jab mandates and all that stuff, he was hanging out with Governor Abbott the other day, and he was talking about, hey, this is all eugenics plan, guys. You know, he's laying it thick on the people.
Yeah, it does. If you look at it compared to the nineteen twenties, you know, back then, they forced people to get sterilized. Now they've just confused them into doing it themselves.
That's a great way to put it. You're right.
That's right. Confuse, same thing with the gender, confuse them, right?
And it's up to the devil. I mean, devils are out there of confusion.
Spiritual battle, I'm talking about that all week.
Absolutely, it's a spiritual battle.
Yeah, that was actually all I saw, because my feed was all Charlie Kirk, Charlie Kirk, Charlie Kirk. But as soon as you look at the comments, like, the top comment was like, this is no longer a battle of left versus right or Democrat versus, but this is now good versus evil. That's all I saw. Well, this is now good versus evil, good versus evil. So I'm glad you said that. So, I mean, look, Christina, I already love you. We've been hanging out for about ten minutes.
Talk about good energy, right?
Yeah, no, it's so great about this show is we get to hang around with like-minded folks. If we're so, even if they're not like-minded, come on in. I'm not trying to, you know what? Real quick on that point, they left the debate table a long time ago. You know, when I was running for office a couple of years ago, and when I supported campaigns over the past few years, the Democrats wouldn't even show up to debates, unless they had full control of the platform, and all their people were there, and it was like, you know, rigged against you. That's the only time that they would really show up. Rarely could you count on a Democrat showing up to an actual, real, open discussion debate. It's very rare.
Well, right now, none of their values hold water, so it's kind of hard to have a discussion when you're trying to say that girls can be boys and boys can be girls, and there's no such thing as a sexual gender, and that women should have to deal with competing with men. I mean, that's what brought me into it, is I followed Riley to Charlie.
Oh, wow, really?
Yeah. So I was doing a report on men and women's sports, and I started to do the homework. And I'm like, this isn't fair, and it doesn't matter what they do, it's not going to change anything. So it's not fair at the heart of things.
Well, no. I mean, it's an affront to reality. They want everything, they want two plus two to equal five, right? And because if they can do that to us, they can do anything. If they can convince people that men can compete against women, or that two plus two equals five, then they can just destroy our rights and essentially get rid of us. And that's the whole psyop behind these types of crazy things that we see in society today, with the LGBTQ movement. It goes on and on, but the schools, the schools are where all this propaganda is really festering, particularly here in New Mexico. I mean, it is nasty here, and it's gotten so much worse. The Las Cruces School Board is absolutely absurd. If you guys go there, I mean, talk about a circus, talk about dawn from reality, the things that they talk. Because here's the thing, we're the worst in the country, right? Worst education in the country, and it's been like that for years. So you would think, you go in here with these elected school board members, and there's all these public, and we're like, okay, what are we going to do to actually start getting some like tangible change for our kids' academia? It's nothing like that. It's all song and dance. They avoid any kind of criticism. They don't even admit, let alone acknowledge, the fact that we're scoring behind Puerto freaking Rico. So that is super frustrating to me. I love that you're running for school board. And what was it that got you into, you know, I mean, so you said it was the Riley to Kirk thing?
Well, that was kind of what brought my head into the space. And then I was just affronted with the books and just lack of education. It's like the system is set up for them to fail.
That's right.
And something has to change. I mean, it was, it is a tragedy. And New Mexicans deserve better. There's no reason that we don't have top-to-line education. There's, we have access to the technology, but they won't spend ten thousand dollars on a gender-affirming clothes closet? I mean, where are you spending your money and why?
That's what it boils down to.
So, yeah, their technology can take us into the 21st century in our education. We need to be focusing on STEM, agriculture. We live in agriculture valley. Why aren't we loving this valley?
And STEM's a science, technology.
Yes, STEM, science, technology, electronics, and math.
Math, okay.
Before we get into all of our questions, because I know we have a lot of questions for you, give us your little story, a little short-minute bio on yourself. Actually, she has a whole entire book, novel, that someday will come out, I promise you, because I've known her a little longer than.
No, I've heard, I've heard the stories, so what can you see about, ladies and gentlemen?
But give our audience just kind of a quick view, idea of who you are, my dear.
A lifelong learner, running for school board. I'm a senior at NMSU. I started in psychology, I think I was just figuring myself out. But then I went into social work when I figured, okay, I've figured myself out, now I'm going to help others. And so I'm in my senior year, I work at CYFD, and so I see firsthand.
And CYFD stands for?
The Children, Family, Youth Department. And I can see firsthand how the system is failing our kids. We give them all the authority of fourteen to control their lives, but none of the wisdom to know how to do that. And we need to shore up those gaps. There's no reason they're falling through the floor like they are, except for the system is set up to fail them. So there's practical changes that can happen to engage our students, get rid of our occupancy rate, build a sense of community and patriotism in our communities again. And we need to bring back loving ourselves, loving America, and then let things grow from there.
And where did you grow up?
I grew up in Montana, but I was transplanted down here in the eighties, where I quickly fell through the school system. It was so far behind me. And so I was just showing up on Friday to pass the tests, and by the time I turned sixteen, I was going, I quit. I went to test it out, went to college, and started business school, and then graduated like four months from my high school class, graduated. And just started, then I went to California and ceded to fall off the face of the earth for a little while.
California.
Yes, California dreaming, in the nineties.
In the nineties. That was the place to be in the nineties, eighties and nineties.
Yeah, it was exciting, but it was a tough road, tough road to get out of.
So you don't have to divulge too much into that if you don't want to, but so obviously, you're very smart. I was always kind of jealous of people like you, who didn't even have to show up to class and they just passed tests. And there's people who have that type of intellect, who did, they're just, they're just good at taking tests, and they don't need to, I mean, I had a couple of guys like that in my classes, like, they're like, nah, I'll just read the book myself and come and take the exam. There was a couple of guys I knew that are like that, you know, and I've never been like that. You know, I'm a very resilient type person, I have to study my face off, and then maybe I'll score good on the exam.
Well, the problem was that the education system in New Mexico is about three years behind me. So I came from sixth in the, I was, came from sixth in the nation to New Mexico.
So you were done, yeah.
So already at that time, and the New Mexico education was.
Nineteen eighty-two, eighty-three, it was the two years, yeah.
So how bad was it back then? It was probably still in thirties or forties. I'm sure it wasn't that much better than it is now.
Well, it was about, it was like, what was it, eighty-two, forty-ninth, fiftieth? It's always been forty-ninth or fiftieth in the country.
I think Susanna got it down to the thirties for a while.
Did she?
I think, I'll look it up. That's a good question.
Fact-check that, but.
Fact-check.
But definitely.
Needless to say, it wasn't, yeah, it wasn't sixth in the nation. I came out of a very high school standard.
I remember being in school and kids would move, because there was a point in time where California schools were way past New Mexico. I remember that distinctly. And I remember kids from California be like, bro, this is the easiest, you guys are still in elementary school. They were, they were super advanced. And I knew a lot of kids who moved from other states to New Mexico, and they're like, what is this? Freaking cockamamie, pre-kinder stuff, you know? I saw that.
Yeah, and there was no way to up. There were no classes. They wouldn't let me go into higher classes because of the scheduling, so it was just a no-win. And I quickly got bored. Fortunately, I did have enough foundation to go to college, but so many kids are getting their guardianship at sixteen and a half. They're not prepared to be out in the world. They haven't been equipped to cook a meal, let alone balance a checkbook or run their lives.
Is that strictly up to like the magistrate judge does that?
It is a process. I'm still finding out what the steps were, because I haven't been there that long. But no, this CYFD workers determine that there's an assessment that they take. But no, it doesn't.
So you have quite an education just on young kids yourself, just from what you've done.
Yeah, well, I was one of those young kids that fell through the cracks, and it's only by the grace of God that I'm here.
Yeah, thank God. I mean, but for me, I can't stand to see, I learned very young that waste is a very negative energy. And so when there's a young, talented individual, we should have a system to like intake them, to onboard them, and then like isolate them and like, you know, because they're going to be different, you know? But these gifted students need to have a lot more attention. They need to, we need to utilize them for society, for our local society. I mean, most of the talent here leaves immediately, because there ain't no jobs here. But there should have been an intake system for someone like you, like, okay, they're way, she's way advanced, let's put her with the advanced classes and get her going.
There probably is now, but this was years and years ago.
There was when I was in school, which I'm older than both of you, back in my day.
Well, she was before, yeah, you were before her.
You know, you have like the honor society.
Were you here? Did you go to school here?
Graduated from Las Cruces High.
Did you slip through then?
You would take, you know, advanced, you could take advanced classes and, I'm trying to think, you know, I wasn't that smart to do that stuff. Although I will say, I graduated in the top ten percent of my class. I was probably at the very, very bottom.
No, but I mean, it's not, I mean, all of our kids can be smart. It's just a matter of finding out what they're good at. We all have God given talents.
That's right.
So it's just meeting them where they're at and getting them to where they need to be without. You know, it may not be conventional. They may not be good at math, but they should know how to read, they should know how to write, they should know how to write cursive, because all of our founding documents are written in cursive.
Thank you, because I'm a big proponent of cursive.
Me too.
Huge. And here, I don't think public schools have to teach it.
That's ridiculous.
Right?
I don't think so either. And it's going to become like a foreign language.
I think it's ridiculous.
To the future generations, they're not going to be able to read cursive.
President Trump's big on cursive though, right? I think he's trying to get it back too. I'm sorry, I meant to interrupt.
I think so too.
Yeah, I think you're right. Well, with that wonderful signature too, he should be. He's got like the best signature.
He has the best handwriting.
It's awesome.
I love cursive, because I had a really hard time. I always had like a reading disability and a writing disability. I'm left-handed, but whatever. I ended up getting really good at reading and really good at cursive. So I take a lot of pride in learning cursive. It's very difficult for me to actually like get good at it, because my handwriting was so sloppy. But I feel like that really helped me just gain confidence, because I was really the beginning of my education, when I worked a little extra hard with someone privately, with my reading and my writing, then I was able to be, hey, I'm actually not so bad at this, and like my whole. It's just so important to have good educators. It's so important to have a good school board. I mean, you're going to be, you know, the only one that has common sense values, right?
Well, Natalie's running too.
Good point. And there's a chance for you both to win, so I love that.
Hopefully.
Unfortunately, there's one district, we don't have a conservative running. It's still Patrick Nolan, I think. He's running, oh, quick question, maybe either of you know, can you write in a candidate in any of these local ones?
Probably not. It's just too easy.
I don't know.
And you know, I hate to even say this, but I was thinking about that today, and I thought, you know, nobody in my district is running. We already elected one year or two ago. But let's say that you did write it in. I'm so fearful of election integrity. I'm thinking, if you did write it in, would they pull your ballot and could they mess you up? Isn't that awful to be so paranoid about that?
Well, with our voting system, the way it is, which I'm not a fan of, you can have your second and third choice, choice rank voting.
It's a city council. Thank God, you don't have to do that.
Yeah, you're not in on that.
No, but it's still, I think.
Oh, yeah, just like my phone, in the back of my phone, I have ranked choice voting sucks.
Yeah, yeah, I don't like it, so.
We just need someone in there that's got some decent common sense value. Now, you're obviously better than anyone decent. I think you have, you know, you're exactly the qualities that I'm looking for in someone that I want to vote for for school board. I don't know if I'm in your district, but, you know, it's going to be a big battle, even if you and Natalie both get in there. And, you know, it would be a better battle if you two are in there, because, man, they get vicious, they get vicious. I've been in there, I've been, I have dealt with the school board presidents, school board members for years. And it's just, it's such a chaotic, intense, vicious environment. You wouldn't think you'd say that about a school board.
Really?
But you literally got to go in there to like a viper pit. It's nasty, it's nasty. And it, I, similar feeling I get when I go to the county commission meetings, those guys are nasty. I mean, they go out of their way to just make sure that, that you know they don't like conservative values, basically.
But I think you could handle it. You're pretty tough.
Well, not only that, I mean, I don't see people as my enemy or my other, so, I mean, I'm going to try to reach them.
You could Charlie Kirk them.
You're very sweet, very soft-spoken, so.
You know, it's just common sense. We need to bring common sense back to our education system. Reading, writing, arithmetic, I mean, these are core values that we have to reinforce. And if a kid is gifted or has exceptional talent, I mean, meet them where they're at and take them to where they want to be. It's so doable with technology. It doesn't have to be the days where you sat in class waiting for the teacher to come to you for a half an hour. You can have technology right there that's going to be in your language, because we do have a multi-language.
I don't know, you're thinking very solution-oriented. I don't know if you're going to be able to do this. That's one of the things, when you'd watch the Charlie Kirk videos, and it was so disappointing, and almost sometimes I wanted to cry, the students that were at the microphone, and you could tell, it wasn't clicking. It's like, our education system has not helped you to learn to think and process. And that was very, very sad to watch that. And I think that's still an issue in our schools, don't you? And that was very, very sad to watch that. And I think that's still an issue in our schools, don't you?
It, it is, but I think it's this, uh, one that's easy to solve. This has been a psyop. I mean, this whole COVID.
Your solution.
My solution is common sense. Take gender confusion out of our schools. It doesn't have no, any place in our schools whatsoever. They're there to teach reading, writing, arithmetic, uh, how to balance a checkbook, grow a garden, cook a meal. You know, those are the skills that they need to pair them for the world. And with the twenty-first century, they need to have technology. They need to know how to use it. Just what I've seen in the last two years has me going, wow. I've lived in an amazing time from being born, watching Little House on the Prairie, wishing I could go back to a horse and buggy. To sitting on the edge of seeing, um, catching rocket ships with chopsticks. So it's an amazing time to live and we have technology now that can meet any kid where they're at. So.
It's willful. It's willful intent to destroy these kids' education because I've studied the way people learn, you know, just in what I do with marketing and stuff. You understand what, everybody has a different way that they learn. Some people are audible, some people are visual. A lot of times apprenticeships are the best way for people to learn.
Absolutely, hands-on learning.
Hands-on learning.
Neil McGowan, uh, was a teacher at Mayfield for thirty years and had a great federally rated program for at-risk youth. That dealt with hands-on learning. And that's really so important because that was the time where I lost my horses and stuff. That was taken out of my life, that I started to mess up. But if we could put the, get these kids that are having trouble with school, having trouble at home and give them a foundation, working with their hands, being around animals. You know, the Cowboy Church is gonna, has a program that they're going to be starting as soon as they get their official building. That is going to be four H centered. They're going to have arenas. They're going to have animals for the kids.
So we still have four H at least.
Yes, yes. And it's something that we can, um, reinforce. Because I think nothing's more therapeutic for a kid that's got a world of turmoil than grooming a horse. Cleaning a stall. Working with the animals. That's very therapeutic and I think it'd be a great way to reach some of these troubled kids and take the storm out of them.
I like that. Take the storm out of them.
Yeah, you can just see the storm inside of them and you give them all, like I said, all this authority at fourteen. And yet none of the wisdom to handle their life. And we wonder why they fail. And then we wonder why they fall. And then we're spending, what, ten years trying to pull them out of addiction, pick them up off the streets, get them out of, if they survive the streets. So, no, we have to start at the bottom. When you grow a garden, you start with a solid foundation, uh, bed that you till the earth. So we really need to clean the weeds out of our education system. We don't have the Department of Education to deal with. So New Mexico can do whatever they want with their education system and I want to make it great.
And localize it.
Yeah, absolutely. A Jeffersonian type government where we're so sufficient. I mean, we have a diverse, beautiful valley that could be such a thriving place for this.
And I think we still have community here with, uh, you know, today's culture has a lot of families that aren't intact, but we do have some that are. Could you also, we've neglected to ask you, kind of define where your district borders are, a good idea of what that is? I know they're kind of all.
Yes, it's really a trick question because trying to get a copy of that map seems to be a mystery, but.
That's also something to talk about almost.
A really easy way to see if I'm in your district is just to Google, um, what district your school's in. I'm running a district too. There's twenty-five schools in my district. It goes all the way through like this area down to Pecato. So we're all like long.
Lomond.
Lomond, down to Pecato, out to Messia.
Other way out to Messia.
Out to South Maine and then loops around the university. And so.
So check it out. See if you guys are in school board district two and vote for Christina Moore.
Yes, please.
You know, I don't know who's running against you, but, uh, I already love you, so.
The incumbent.
Just the incumbent.
Christina Moore, means we can back you.
I have to make my little pitch too. So maybe you don't live in her district, okay? Maybe you live in Las Cruces, maybe you don't even, can't even vote because you live out of Las Cruces. You can always send her a few bucks because it's so important to invest in the education of our kids. And maybe you know people that do live in our district, you know, there's so many ways that you can really help her. Do you, is your website up?
Yes, there's a website and there's a Facebook page. So you know, liking a follow helps to get the message out there. Um, if you're able to donate, then that's gracious.
Yes, Christina and that's K R. I'm sorry, I'm talking over you. Give your, give your website out.
K R.
Come on, you know your name.
No, Christina dot more.
It's right here. She just put it up. That's why she's not remembering it. Christina Moore four, okay? The number four, N M dot com. So it's K R I S T I N A, then more, conventional spelling. M O O R E, the number four, N M dot com. But you know, you can find her on Facebook.
Absolutely.
I'll put it in the descriptions in the.
Yeah, we'll put it on there too. But I really just can't stress, I think as a, a community, we need to support all of our good candidates. Because they're going to represent you, okay? Even, even if she's not your particular school board representative. She gets elected, she's a vote and she still represents the entire community of Las Cruces Public Schools.
And I'm running for the parents. You know, everybody asks you, what's your why? Why, why are you doing this? Well, it's not because I have kids in the system. It's because I was a kid that fell through this system. And I want to be there for the parents that want to have a voice in their kid's life. You know, the state of New Mexico gives our youth way too much power at thirteen and fourteen years old. That's just the bottom line. No kid is ready for that kind of responsibility. So as I said before, we give them all the power and none of the wisdom to know what to do with it. So we need to change that and the community can do that too.
So that can be done at a local level. We don't have to go to our state legislators to redo laws or anything.
No, we can do this locally, just by joining you in your community. Come to the Cowboy Church. We'd love to have you. There's going to be a bucking and bumper bull riding next weekend.
I'm a big fan of Pastor Rice in the church. That's a beautiful church.
It's a great church. It's a great community and.
Truly.
And it's just, um, based Christian ethics.
Plus we need to promote also, there's a forum coming up this week, right? On the eighteenth.
Yes.
The C C I A, okay, that's the organization, we, I think we all belong to it now, Coalition of Conservatives in Action. On the eighteenth, which is Thursday, and that's going to be at, uh, uh, the, uh, Diaz's Church. Where is that on Hickory?
I have no idea.
Oh gosh, I've got, oh, wait, give me two seconds. I've got it right here. That's why I see I have all my papers and stuff, okay? It's a school board candidate town hall meeting, Thursday, September eighteenth, Desert Oasis Church that starts at six P M. And that's sixteen forty Hickory Loop. I think that's over by the Cracker Barrel, isn't it? Okay, so you can find it, suite one oh three. It's a, it's a really nice facility to do that. Come and meet Christina and, uh, the other school board is, I don't know if the other school board member is going to come, I mean, the.
I don't know either.
The incumbent, I should say. I'm already counting you as a school board member. And I believe Natalie's going to be there.
Awesome, yeah.
They invite, they do invite everyone. Um, and as we, you know, our show too, if, you know, you're a candidate, love to have you.
Yeah, I get so offended at the, the way they do education here in New Mexico because we, we know what is effective. We were talking about earlier a little bit, you know, some kids learn through apprenticeships, some people, some kids are, uh, visual, some are audible. It's a, it's a combination of that based on the personality and there's, we know what's effective. We know what works. Look at the homeschool kids. They only, they only study for like two to four hours a day. And their, and their proficiency in math and reading is well beyond our public school system. So they're wasting a lot of time with our children and they're, and they're basically jailing them. You know, if you ever had a kid in school, like you, you talk, you drop a kid at school, it's a freaking steel door. They're, they're locked in there. And in my head, I'm like, you guys are the ones I need to be protecting my daughter from. You know what I mean? Like, because obviously with the LGBTQ still going, we know how dangerous that is. And then they're just, they're just, you can't reason with them. The school board is so bad to deal with. And I hate saying that, guys, but I doubt with it for you. I would, I went way in there, way in there, going to school meetings. You know, dealing superintendent, dealing with all that stuff. And man, they, it just, they're so far removed from reality. It's not even funny.
When you got, didn't you, you couldn't even, they banned you from campus?
They tried to, but then I sued, I threatened to sue them and then they stopped it.
Banned you from what campus?
From public school. I couldn't, uh, be on public school grounds for a year because I basically said that Marxism or that, uh, uh, critical race theory was Marxist. That's all I really said. And it's the truth. It is. It's divisive. And, and so because I said that at a school board peacefully, they said that I was, uh, basically disrupting the classroom environment and accused me of harassment. And, and I was banned from public schools for a year because of that. But my lawyer looked at it. We, we know, we basically sent up, uh, you know, an email saying, hey, we're, we're going to sue your ass. And then they reinstated me right away and a couple of school board members quit right after, right after they, they dropped down right after that. But, you know, that's just what you deal with over there, guys. They, they really like to show you their power. They really try to break you. And they didn't necessarily break me. Actually, they fueled me. I ran, I went and run for lieutenant governor right after that. So you know, that's the same thing with like Charlie Kirk. They're going to try and take you down. All it does is make us stronger.
Right, yeah. Yeah, they made a million more Charlies yesterday, the other day. They made a, they poked the bear.
So true. So I'm looking at your palm card here and you've got some good stuff that you want to work towards. I am very interested, as we talked about, the transgender push, I'll call it. Because are there schools that have the change closets? They actually have the change closets?
I think Centennial.
Centennial, yeah, that's what I've heard.
That makes sense.
They wrote a ten thousand dollar grant and gave like eight thousand dollars worth of breast binders out at a pride event. It's like, what? And that is not only dangerous psycho- psychologically to the child, but it can physically harm them. It can physically break ribs. It's not something you just do. And it should not be given to the hands of the youth. I mean, when you're just getting comfortable with being, going through puberty and you have all these emotions and hormones. And you have somebody going, oh, mom, maybe you are trapped in the wrong body and you just need to take this pill. Let me turn you into a lifelong, uh, client of Big Pharma.
Lifelong, a very lucrative client too.
Yes, very lucrative client. No, we need common sense back in education. If a teacher has a different point of view, she'd be left at the door. You're there to educate according to the curriculum, not according to your own ideology.
Not to indoctrinate.
Not to indoctrinate, but educate.
And these kids, oh man, I hear the craziest stories of what's going on at these high schools, like, you know, kids that like to dress up like cats or like the furry thing. I heard about that. Apparently that's a real thing. Kids smoking, smoking vape pens in the classroom like crazy of violence. You know, guys is beating the hell out of their girlfriends during lunchtime stuff. I mean, it is, it's a madhouse. I don't want my daughter going to public school and high school. Hell, no.
No, homeschool, if you can homeschool your kids.
It's, it's so bad. And, and I can't believe they have a change closet over there at Centennial that. And that, that school looks like a prison in the first place. If you just cruise by that dang thing, I think it looks like, does not look very welcoming and friendly and loving.
It's a very sad state of affairs when we have to do that to our schools, you know? Nobody wants to talk about this. They want to blame guns. But a hundred years ago, most boys carried a gun to the high school. They all had guns. We all had guns in our back window in the seventies. Nobody was doing this. What has changed? It's not the guns. It's, it's something else has changed.
The pickup trucks, guys would drive in, you know, especially the farmer from, from the farms and stuff and they had the gun rack and the gun, yeah. No, you're absolutely right.
Common fixture.
There's way less crime when there's guns around. I mean, it's just another common sense principle that we know. As soon as any country in the world that we've seen take guns away from society, violence goes through the roof. It's just what, it's, it's, it's a fact. And if, if there is some types of, um, Republican cities or Republican areas, they always, you know, fudge the numbers that they don't report certain crimes. They don't report certain things, but by and large, you can look at the countries that took the guns away from the people, like Mexico. And oh, is that, is Mexico a really safe place to go to? I don't think so.
I don't think so. Do they still have ROTC in school?
Uh, yeah, from my understanding, they still have ROTC, yeah.
Well, that's good.
They do and they need to.
But the, the military has started indoctrinating. When I was getting out, they were starting to really start indoctrinating with the LGBTQ stuff and, um.
Well, fortunately, that's been changed.
Thank the Lord.
Department of War.
That's right. For when I was in, it was a big, uh, it was big, it was cool to be a Marxist. It was cool to be Che Guevara, in the Che Guevara. There was a lot of Che Guevara stuff going on. And I didn't know what it was. I was super in education. I joined the military out of high school, so I didn't even know what Che Guevara was. But there was a lot of that when I was in and when I got out in two thousand and seven. So imagine how the military is now, you know? The Trump's got, President Trump's got a lot of work to do because the, the military wa- was co-opted by and large. Um, I saw it firsthand. You know, my chief sergeant, um, when I was stationed in Italy, he got caught with, um, hardcore pornographic videos with children under the age of six. You know, two thousand counts of it. And he, you know, he, he was a high ranking official that worked for NATO. So that, you know, these are the types of things that you deal with in all these institutions. They infiltrate our institutions with these types of blackmail and behavior. So this Epstein thing is really just kind of a microcosm and what have you, for what really goes down these massive institutions throughout the world. Not just our country in America, but throughout the world, you'll see that same pattern. I hate to say it, look at the Catholic Church, hate to say it, but I, I love the Catholic Church.
They're not the only ones either.
They're not. So I'm saying, that's my whole point. It's like, you can't just look at them. It's all these institutions, you know, but.
And that's, oh, that's like a whole other show.
The Boy Scouts.
That's like a midnight show.
Christina, I wanted to ask you, so when Julie Reese was running for at the school board and man, she only lost by a hundred and forty votes. So please, what I'm saying is, get out there and, and these small, local elections, people think, eh, whatever, and they don't show up. You know, under twenty percent of the voter ship shows up, so please show up. But as you're out there, and I know you're already talking to people, one of the things when I was door knocking is people didn't believe what I was saying. They said, no, that's not really happening. That's not really true. That, that book is not in the school libraries, things like that. And it was, you, it was very hard to convince them. So I, I would give them, tell them what was going on and say, listen, don't believe me. You just met me today, maybe. So call your school and find out. Go ask, call the teacher and see if this is happening, you know, ask your kid. Sometimes, you know, I didn't come home from school and tell my mom everything that happened at school, what was going on. I mean, what have you come across?
Well, these books not only, I mean, how they're even published, let alone put in school, just blows my mind. Because a lot of them are child pornography. A lot of them just describe sexual acts of being, um, attacked. And.
Pedophilia.
Yeah, and it's glamour, it's glamorized. Uh, cutting is glamorized. They're trying to normalize the worst in humanity and make it just seem like another, like you should expect this. Well, no, you shouldn't expect this. Nothing in this book should be happening. None of these books. Certainly shouldn't be in a high school or, uh, middle school.
The argument that someone who defends this will tell you, well, you know, they're on the internet anyway. They're going to see it. You can't hide it, whatever. And I'm thinking, we, you know, this is community standards. These are public schools. Some of these things, if you go to a bookstore or library section, it's the adult section, you know?
The status quo has been too low for too long in New Mexico. And just because everybody else is jumping off a bridge, do you go jump off it too? You know, just some of these books may be appropriate for older groups, but they don't belong in a middle school. And the ideas behind them, like assassination classroom, I mean, really?
Yeah.
Oh, hold that book up.
Yeah, if you guys haven't seen this stuff, I mean, there's, Sarah Smith did an excellent job, you know, um, basically chronicleizing the different various, uh, hyper-sexualized books that are in our school system right now. But nothing we can do to get rid of them. They're in there. We, we fought, trust me, they fought Juan and Sarah Smith and everybody. We did our best to expose this stuff and I didn't, I couldn't believe it either. I was wondering, I'm like, there's no way it's that bad. You look through that stuff, it is crazy. And they, look, they want to destroy the children's innocence. The sooner they do that, the better, because they can exploit them. They can start guiding them to whatever narrative that might be able to exploit them financially or whatever. It destroys society. They want to destroy the family nuclear unit. You start hyper-sexualizing people, the way that they're trying to do with these books. That's, it's not good for their psyche.
That is a really good word, hyper-sexualizing. That's a really good word.
Well, these books are rape of the mind.
Bad. I, I can't tell you. You have, I can't show it here. I wish I could show, maybe I can. If I can post the links or if I can put it. I'll look into that. I'll put, I'll put them up there just so you guys can get a flavor of it. Viewer discretion is advised. I mean, it's, I can't even say that because the kids have access to this too. So it's not even, don't even be advised. It's looking what the kids are looking at.
And by and large, the school board will say, well, you know, these guys just want to ban books. They want to ban books. Well, it's about the appropriateness of that. You do that with every, I mean, education, that's what it is. When you put together curriculum, I'm not a teacher, okay, but you, you have to decide what will be on your agenda to teach kids at that time. And I just don't think this is, now I got up and spoke to the school board and they kind of made fun of people like me. So, you know, like you don't have kids. And to me, it's all about, I have, I have a family here, you know? I have nephews and great nephews and nieces and everything. It's about community standards.
And common sense. I mean, any adult that reads these books, some of these books especially, and thinks it's appropriate. I have serious questions about your moral values because they're just describing the rape of a child is not appropriate. Deciding, describing the murder of a child is inappropriate.
Wow, that's, that makes me so mad.
Yeah.
So how would, let's say you get in the school board, okay? I'm already putting you on there. How could you bring this issue back? Uh, you know, if, I'm hoping both you and Natalie get on there and can drive some common sense. But if anything, maybe you can't change things. But I always see that you can make a lot of noise and be a voice and get the public more educated.
That, and I think just raising the kids up above the standards that have been set for them. This bias of low expectations that is placed on the heads and the minds of these kids has just got to be shattered. We need to raise them up so that this stuff, that's the only way we're going to win, light against dark. This is just evil. And it's just there to destroy their minds and pollute their, I mean, it's just ridiculous. It's absolutely ridiculous.
Such a very ser-, especially when you're young like that, you don't even know yourself, you don't know your emotions. And my spiritual belief is that that's for married people. You're supposed to be finding your lifelong partner and then engaging in sexual stuff.
There you go, Charlie Kirk again.
Even some of the stuff isn't for me. I mean, there's child pornography described in here, child rape is described in here. And glamorized like it's to be expected and normalized. So.
Well, it's a complete affront to, to my religious values as a Christian, as a man of Jesus. It's a complete affront to that. And, and so if you don't want your kids looking at this stuff, guys, you guys got to get out there and vote for Christina.
Not a Christian, any decent person is not going to want their kid exposed to this. Any decent person would start reading and go, whoa, like really? Any decent person would start reading, go, whoa, like really? It makes you feel icky.
You know, it would be great if, if I had like.
I can put it, and we felt.
It's gross.
If I won the lottery, I would just get all enough printed and make sure that every parent, every parent in this community, public school, had this book. And so they would know.
Well, hopefully we can post the links. And you don't even need to read the whole book. I mean, there's three or four in there that are enough to make you, it's just so clear what's being done. There's no reason to expose a child to this unless you're trying to condition them for that life.
Some type of grooming.
Because if you were gonna apply any therapeutic techniques to a child that's been exposed to that, you certainly wouldn't do it like this. This is just re-traumatizing. This is putting an idea into a kid's head that doesn't need to be there and has no place. It's just destroying their innocence. It is mental rape. And.
I agree with that.
I would definitely be looking at policies to raise our kids up out of this because they don't need to be exposed to this stuff.
And kids just aren't even encouraged anymore these days. That's one thing I noticed too.
They're hopeless.
They, they just don't encourage the boys, encourage the girls, like, let's find your talents. Let's see what you're good at. Yeah, good job. You know, like people, I've met so many kids, because I'm around a lot of youth, you know, just from various reasons. And they, they just, they're so shocked when I'm like, hey, man, you should pursue that. You're, you're actually pretty good at that. You know, keep, keep going. He's like, really? I'm like, well, yeah. I mean, no one's told you that you're talented in this one thing before? Like, well, no. Well, how old are you? 19? Like, we're, we're, we're the teachers. Where's like any kind of like spiritual encouragement? It's just been missing. And so, and a lot of these kids don't have fathers. A lot of these kids don't have any. And even if they do have a mom, they're usually working their face off just to pay the bills.
That's what my mom is doing, working 14-hour days. So.
So, yeah, so you get that.
And, and I'm not saying that the school should replace the parents because that's the best. Of course, if you had the two parents at home that are, are decent and can do all that. But I really hear what you say because I remember being in school and the teachers would do that. They would, you know, they'd say, oh, you know what? This is very good or you're, you're good at writing. Encourage you to go in that direction and, and other, you know, people, other students and recognize that talent. And there's a lot of good teachers too. I'm not gonna diss all the teachers.
There's some amazing teachers.
Some are doing the best job they can, can, under the circumstances that are there. So not only, you know, she'll be, of course, representing the public, but she'll be working with the teachers and, you know, approving, creating curriculum and all that good stuff, right?
Absolutely.
Is there anything that the school board does that maybe the public doesn't really think about?
I don't know. I'm not on it yet.
Isn't that a good question I just thought of? Because I don't know the answer.
So what, what was the question?
We'll have to come back to that after the.
Is, maybe you, you know this, because you were on a school board for a charter school. Is there anything that the school board does or has power over, authority over, that the community doesn't really think about parents? And don't really think, oh yeah, they can do that.
The school board has ultimate power. The, what we were doing there at that charter school, which was formerly the number one LGBTQ school in the state, which simultaneously had the worst reading and math skills in the entire state. Their proficiency was the worst. So when I got involved, it was a transitionary period to get rid of that and implement actually real academia. And so we have tremendous power. The school boards have tremendous power. You, you get to decide exactly where every single penny gets directed and which programs, what teachers are gonna hire, lawyers are gonna hire, administrate, I mean, you name it. The school board has ultimate power.
So they approve like the, I presume the principal is gonna hire the new teachers, but they're like, oh, you know what? I don't like, I don't think Mr. Ziegler should be teaching this school. Boom, they can just.
Yep. It's, it's, it's absolutely crazy how much power these school boards have. So just on that little micro level with this charter school, we had enough power to actually get the attendance back up. Their, their proficiency is up now. They're just doing so much better now. And they're just being real teachers, normal things. Like we're not, they're not over there indoctrinating them. And this is my opinion, by the way, you know, I, I don't want to get anybody in trouble because it's a great team over there. But they have the exact same types of powers that I was able to exercise for the children there at the school board, here at the public school system. That's why they fight so hard to make sure that people that aren't on board with their agenda get in there. Because they do have tremendous power, guys. It's, it's crazy. You know, you can, when you start talking about all this money, you look at the money. Because you, I had to look at, analyze all the budgets, all the money that we're gonna be, it's a significant amount of money that you're, that you're responsible for. And so these people, that's another reason why I get livid and pissed off because we know what programs work and don't work. It's such easy deductive logic. Look at states like Texas. Look at states like Florida. Look at the programs that they're using. Oh, we don't really know. Let's fly down, let's use some of these resources and fly down there and hang out with an administrator to see how we can start implementing those successful programs down here in New Mexico. Seems commonsensical, right? The more you want to talk about common sense at these school board meetings, the more they don't like you.
The more unpopular you are.
That's right.
Well, we'll see what happens. I like balancing a budget, so.
Yeah, you're smart. You got your, got your business degree. You got your high IQ there. We'd love to have you in there balancing those budgets. You know, and so we gotta get you in there somehow. We gotta get you, you know, and so here's another last thing. This might help you. I don't know. I mean, just, they did find that the majority of people who were celebrating Charlie Kirk's death, the majority of them were posting stuff on social media, they were school teachers. And that's because of the indoctrination that, that they have to go through. It's at, at the school board level and, and just being in the public school system in general. And so she's not gonna be liked, but that doesn't, that doesn't represent the normal people. If the school, the teachers are, are celebrating that type of behavior, you guys should be really getting some alarms going off saying like, hey, that's not how I feel about things. I need to get someone in there that does agree with that, you know, pretty intense way of thinking, you know? I want to get someone in there that's got common sense values. And, and so just think about that, guys. If you want someone in there that isn't celebrating something horrible, that's your girl. You know, that's your girl out there.
I think we're getting kind of towards the end of the show. Is there anything that we haven't talked about you wanted to touch on, Christina?
No, just saying a prayer for Erica and Charlie's kids and the Turning Point family.
Why don't you give a little closing statement also about your campaign and then we'll close out the show or am I missing anything?
No, no, that's, that's good. Yeah, we're coming up on our hour now, so it's prayer time.
Well, I hope I can earn your vote and be your voice in the school board. I think we can make the education here great. I don't see why not. It's just a matter of doing it. You know, the status quo has been too low for too long. So that is my wish. I'm here to serve. It's not about power for me. It's about getting the job done.
So that's Christina Moore.
Love it.
We want to get her elected. She's running for the Las Cruces Public School Board and that's District Two. Let me give her website out again, which is Christina, K R I S T I N A Moore, M O O R E, another number four, N M dot com. That's a pretty good, easy to remember website.
It's easy.
And the election is November 4th. I want to say though, it starts about 30 days before. Doesn't it start about October 3rd?
Yeah, early voting. So we'll be doing a get out to vote. You'll be hearing from us, so. Yeah, please be in contact. Go to the website and let me know any concerns you have. I will be happy to address them. And yeah, make a plan now so we can act later.
Very, very awesome to have you on the show. We always end the show with prayer, so we'll make a quick prayer. Lord, thank you so much for bringing an amazing candidate to the school board. And, and we just pray that you protect her and you pray that you, we got, you got her campaign and that we can get the city to show up and vote for candidates like her, Lord, because we need help protecting the children for you, Lord, and we need help guiding our youth as we know that this, this city and this, this area is in dire straits with the youth right now, Lord. So we just pray that you continue to guide her, protect her, and all the other conservative candidates in this area. We need, we need champions of common sense, Lord. And we just pray that you continue to guide us and protect us and help us achieve that goal, Lord. Thank you so much for everything. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen, for tuning in. Thank you, Christina, for coming in and having the gall, the huevos.
The ovaries.
The ovaries. Yeah, the ovaries.
Remember, we don't want a transgender.
Ironic, ironic, right? But no, it's great. It's great to have you. I'm so glad you're running and I'm just, you've got a lot of good conservative candidates running this year. This is awesome to see. Thank you so much for coming in. We'll catch you soon, hopefully. Hopefully we'll maybe have you back on again before the election, you know, last push. But other than that, you know, love you guys. Have a good day.
Thanks, Christina.
Take care.